All right, it is six o'clock, so good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Our first item is Students of the Month, so I'll stand over here and I'll call your kiddos up one at a time and they can come stand by me and I'll read some nice things about them and then hand them their certificate and then we'll get on with the rest of our meeting.
Our first student of the month is Bodhi Shard. Bodhi, come on up. You can stand right here next to me, Bodhi, and you can face out that way, so your whole family, it looks like they all showed up to take picture. Bodhi, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? What school do you go to? Second grade at Crystal River Elementary? Awesome. Can I read a little bit about you? It says, this is what your teachers wrote when they nominated you. They said, Bodhi is a passionate and enthusiastic classmate. He greets his peers in the morning with a big smile. I can, I can believe that. He is excited to be at school and brings its positive energy with him each and every day. Bodhi uses executive skills throughout the school day. He does his best to finish work and produces high-quality working class. And your teacher said, I can see your hard work every day, Bodhi. Thanks for bringing your strong habits of a scholar to CRES. Can I shake your hand? Good job. All right, and a whole cheering section. Every kid deserves that much support. Our next student of the month is Liliana Candela. Hi.
Hi.
What grade are you in?
Second grade.
Second grade, and do you go to Crystal River Elementary also? Okay. I'm gonna read a little bit about you, okay? Your teacher said Liliana is a great friend to all, an enthusiastic learner, and shows perseverance every day at school, no matter what she is learning. Congratulations. Will you shake my hand? All right. Want a picture, Raleigh? All right, Raleigh from the Silkress Sun. We'll take a picture of the Students of the Month out in lobby. And we'll get our, our meeting. You're welcome to stay, but it's also okay if you don't want to stay for a. Okay, moving right along. Let's get into roll call, please.
Laird. Montemayor.
Here.
Robeson.
Here.
Sparhawk. Mayor.
Here.
You have a corn?
Great. I like the new seating arrangement. Mix it up a little bit. It's good. Next item is public comment. If anybody's here and would like to address the board on anything that's not on the agenda tonight, now is your opportunity. I know these guys are on the agenda. Is there anybody online waiting for public comment? If you're online and you wanted to make a public comment, you can just raise your Zoom hand. But if not, you can just listen in. Okay. Seeing none, I think we'll move along. Uh, next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from our last two meetings in November, as well as consideration of our appointment of a Latino Advisory Board member, um, on-call snow removal agreement, and accounts payable from December ninth. Any questions or items to pull for discussion?
I'll discuss. I'll discuss snow removal, my trustee comments, but I don't think it has anything to do with that.
Okay. Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Jess, second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Now for trustee comments. Chris, you want to kick that off?
Um, sure. Let me see. Um, yeah, I, I, I just, I, I like the idea of having that backup, um, thing, but I am curious if we could investigate, you know, what it would take to have weekend, a backup on-call, weekend trails clearing. Because every time it snows, over the weekend, the Rio Grande Trail gets packed and ice turns into ice immediately. If it's during the week, the town staff or rafters staff gets out there and cleans it up and it's great. If it happens on a Friday, it gets completely, turns into a rink for a while until it warms up to the degree that, so, I don't know, in the long, I don't think it's not for this budget, but in the, in our, in our, so we can continue to try to work on our bike friendliness and stuff. That's a real key thing. It's just like being able to have the sidewalks be not treacherous. And it's, and like, the Rio Grande Trail still gets used like crazy even with being covered in glare ice. So, um, yeah, I'd love to see if we could explore getting somebody on retainer to come in on the weekend and just at least do the Rio Grande Trail. Um, and maybe Rafta could help us do part of that or something, but, um, so that was one thing. Um, I also forgot to say, um, when we were talking about that amazing Northern Lights, um, demonstration, it did, did, the, the bittersweet part of that was, was the difficulty in some cases of escaping light pollution in our town. And, um, so it was an interesting experience for me of, again, you know, how do we continue to work on still having safety, but eliminating situations where we're just grossly wasting light energy and diminishing experiences like that for people and just, you know, night sky in general and, uh, wildlife impacts of that, so. And so I think, yeah, just a comment of, hopefully we can keep that on our radar, um, going down the line. Um, also, we were the subject of this kind of, uh, like, um, grabby YouTube video thing about storage units. Um, it was sort of one of these explainer YouTube videos, but we're the subject of it and it's all about house. Self-storage took over America and this, this YouTube person has, I guess, decided that we're in one of the top percentages of communities in the entire nation in terms of resident pers- uh, amount of storage square footage per resident, essentially. Which I think as we continue to try to like, bad ideas around about like, how do we find little trickles of income if we, especially if we don't have sales tax to think about going to that well, I still think, thinking about, um, storage units and figuring out ways to not penalize them out of business or anything like that, but just derive more public benefit from them, um, I think is something we should continue to look at. Um, we had a labor of love auction on Friday. That was nice for everyone to come out. Thank you for everyone for bidding on things and it's still online through this Friday and there's hundreds of things on there and still a few things getting added, so. Uh, more fundraising onward and onward, Jeff. Um, and then, uh, also the Bike Ped Trails Commission met and it was a pretty quick prod, prick, meeting, but I think, of course, they would love to get together in the new year at some point and sort of have a joint discussion of what, that's especially sort of just around what projects are, we want to focus on, on terms of tactical urbanism or whatever. Um, and, um, that's it for me.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Christine, any comments this evening?
Sure, um, the sky was beautiful tonight, too.
Yeah.
Like a pink. It was so gorgeous. But, um, talking about sky, um, I, um, had a Latino Advisory Board meeting and, um, we had the pleasure of having Ryan attend, our town manager, and, um, Jared, and we talked about the Downtowner and, um, we had some comments about the new app. We had talked about that, that if we were gonna get a new app, that there was gonna be some challenges, but it sounds like Jared was gonna look into, um, the new app and seeing how long the old app is still available or we have to just use the new app. So it was good, um, to also have, um, him present the Downtowner and questions and it was a good discussion. Um, and then, as you see, we got a, um, board member, um, application, so that's exciting. And, um, we were just talking about just goals that we want to do for twenty, wrapping up twenty-five and then what we're, what we're looking at for twenty-six. And, um, I also attended the Transportation Coalition meeting, um, and that's up in Aspen. It's talking about the, um, traffic going up to Aspen and, um, we're at our tenth meeting and it, we came up with two options and basically it's doing a phase of congested pricing or just pull out doing congestion pricing, going into Aspen like a hot, a hot lane or just doing a, a pricing lane. But of course, you know, there's just ideas and options, but it still has to go through a lot, um, to get to that. But, um, then I believe that's it. And then I had tourism, um, chamber tourism and we were just wrapping up twenty-five and, um, they were talking about how they're gonna look into twenty-six offering grants for businesses, which I think is pretty exciting. And then that's all I have for now.
Okay, thanks for seeing me. Colin, comments?
Yeah, thanks. Just, uh, thanks for everybody who donated during Carl Gisday. If you are able to, thank you very much, uh, for participating in that program. I just want to shout out to the rec program for the work, uh, over Thanksgiving and, uh, uh, Light Up Carbondale. Um, both events were a lot of fun, attended by a lot of people and, uh, thanks for all that work. Special shout out for Carl for wrapping all the trees. Uh, they look great and anybody else who helped with that. Um, and that's all I have.
Erica?
Um, uh, Parks Direct Commission meets tomorrow, so I don't have an update for them. And then, yeah, uh, kind of didoing, um, Colin, the Turkey Trot was amazing and an amazing, um, uh, amount of work for the staff as well. Twelve hundred people, um, all the registrations ran out of bibs and were using wristbands and, uh, did not run out of pie amazingly. So, um, pie was donated from, or came from the ci- city market and, uh, the Smithy. That was pretty awesome. So, um, and then, yeah, First Friday, uh, another successful holiday, First Friday, and that sleigh ride is crazy popular. Like, it was like a Disneyland line, um, for folks to ride with Santa. So, um, just a really cool community event. And so thanks to staff for also making that happen and, uh, the Creative District.
Great.
That's it.
Ross?
Uh, we had a long Ruapa meeting on Wednesday, I guess of last week, where we interviewed some candidates for the Executive Director position. Um, April Long is, um, gonna focus her efforts on, on housing. Um, had a couple of really good candidates and I think we've made a decision, but we'll announce that when we announce it. Um, I think it's, it's a, we're at a really good point to, to sort of discuss, to just discuss where, where we want to kind of focus our efforts, um, with that particular, uh, group of folks, although it's basically the Executive Director. Um, and, and I'm really excited, I think, about that opportunity to kind of liaise with the, uh, other river advocates in the valley and kind of maybe kind of define our roles and our collective, uh, collaboration a little bit better. Um, I mostly missed First Friday, but, uh, saw some videos and heard great things. And again, I mean, I, I think we, we never, um, forget to, to thank, thank the board or the, uh, town departments that, that put in long hours to make that happen. And it's, I don't, I don't think anyone takes that for granted. Um, so, uh, wonderful, wonderful work there by Utilities Department and Carl and Parks Department. Um, I would just echo, um, Chris's, uh, request to, to do some, have a Bike Ped kind of pow-wow of some sort to, to, uh, talk tactical urbanism sooner rather than later. Um, I think it's also interesting to, to maybe discuss some of that now because we are in snow for a couple of months every year. It's a good time to talk about what can and what, what can be year-round and what, what, what is, is only a nine-month, is only feasible for nine months of the year. Um, and finally, I would just, um, sort of, uh, suggest that, that folks here on the board and, um, in the community, uh, if you're out and about or in other small towns over the holidays, maybe have an, uh, take a look, take, take in your surroundings and, and have a look at, at the way other towns do or, or don't do wayfinding and tell you where you are and where, how you can get easily to the places you want to be. Um, I think that's always something that I, that I appreciate. And now that it's sort of on our radar, something that I, I really appreciate. I played a gig over in Red, Red, no, Red Cliff?
Cedar Edge.
What's that?
Cedar Edge.
Cedar Edge, Cedar Edge, sorry. That's where it kind of was. Um, and, and, and was, and was actually really like, kind of got there without Siri directions and was able to get exactly where I needed to go because there was big signs that anticipated that I might be going to that one spot where everybody wants to go. Um, and, and just things like that make it really, really easy to find, find trails, find topics of cultural interest, um, find the downtown. And so just keep an eye on.
Cool. Thanks for us. Jess?
About First Friday and the holiday events that the town put on, they were great and well-attended. Um, also just a plug for photos with Santa next Friday, December twelfth, at the Orchard as a fundraiser for Shop With A Cop. Um, it's fifteen bucks and there's a professional photographer there to take pictures with Santa, so, um, it's a really great fundraiser and I think that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Um, I don't have anything to add. I think, um, Brian and I will definitely look at the, uh, months and look at the check-ins with the different boards and commissions and, and take that into account to try to meet with Bike Ped Trail, maybe earlier than normally planned to get an annual overview. I think that's a great idea. Yeah, Chris?
Christina's comment just dredged something up for me also. Uh, I guess we, we are the only municipality that does not have a representative on the, it's usually a sort of staff-level representation on the entrance to Aspen Working Group or something like that. Apparently it includes staff-level people from all the other municipalities in the, in the valley, but I understand that we may not have the bandwidth for that. But, um, I don't know if there's anybody else who wants to potentially be part of that and, and I have, I'm not sure what the process was or wasn't for us denying or agreeing to be part of that or anything. So, but, um, that might be something to think about. Um, and, um, uh, also CDOT apparently is, yeah, is undertaking the beginning of its studies of the entrance to Aspen and kind of, um, they're gonna, you know, they're sort of re-studying the existing report, but there's also alternatives. So, um, it's kind of a comment period right now, which is a good time to let your opinions be heard on that. Um, and especially if there are alternatives that, um, uh, merit different, are, are, you know, that are alternatives to the, to the straight shot, um, those that merit studying. Um, and so, if anybody would like to talk to me further about, um, some of those other alternatives, I, I would be interested in potentially, um, petitioning for some of those other things to be studied alongside just the, the straight shot plan that they have, that's been on the table for thirty years, but has, um, I think has some, some flaws to it. Um, namely that there's a stoplight, uh, Seventh Street that will essentially mean that the backup into town in Aspen will not change at all, so it won't solve any of their congestion problems. Um, so, anyway. Uh, yeah, if anyone wants to talk to me more, more about that, um, that's kind of more of it. But I think some of those things, definitely, we have a lot of people in town commuting to Aspen, so it is of, of interest to some people who live here, so.
Maybe we can just look into whether there was outreach for staff to participate and if we declined or if there's an opening or if we have bandwidth. Good. Anything else before we move on? All right. Thank you, everyone. Next is Attorney's Comments. Mark, anything?
Yeah, briefly, first thing this morning, one of my clients up in Steamboat emailed me to let me know that Jay Harrington had been awarded the Colorado County Manager of the Year.
Wow.
Nice. You guys saw that on the cover of the Steamboat Paper today?
Hmm, cool.
And, um, I texted him and said, congrats, but just passing that along. Go Jay.
Thanks. Not a surprise. Well-qualified and, um, that's great to hear. Thanks. Uh, Ryan, Manager's Comments?
A couple of quick things. Thanks for mentioning, uh, Turkey Trot. Um, I think last year Eric said we had seven hundred and fifty people signed up, six hundred and fifty people showed up, uh, one thousand two hundred and fifty people this year. So, caught everybody a little off guard, but they worked through it and, uh, so, big shout out to everybody that was involved in that one. Um, quick information on the, the Downtowner, I think a couple of things. Um, I think we're caught a little off guard with the speed with which that change happened and also, um, identified that there had been a miscommunication and I think, uh, our understanding of what, um, both of those apps running meant, I think we took that to mean both of those apps would be functional, um, where I think Downtowner's, um, message that maybe we were not understanding clearly was that app would still be there, but it would just have a message telling you to, to push to the other one. So, um, we're working on making sure that we've got messaging out, that folks understand that, but a little bit of a, a stumble there with, I think, one of the things that we were concerned about, which was how's that handoff gonna go? And it didn't go, uh, as smoothly as it, it could have, but, um, people are resting and, um, we did talk about that at the lab meeting because that was a little confusing. All right, um, this next portion will be riveting for everyone watching. Want to talk about scheduling? Uh, I can torture you all with the doodle pole or we can maybe get there. Uh, you know, this is my usual approach. We'll see if we can get there and then if we can't, we'll revert to a doodle pole. Um, just upcoming, we've got, uh, your meeting next week. That will be a regular meeting. Uh, we've got some items, uh, Downtowner Contract and, uh, MOU with Garfield County Order of Program, some things that we need, uh, action on, so we'll make that a regular meeting. Um, Patrick will review the municipal election calendar because, believe it or not, that's, uh, coming up. I think January sixth is when folks can pick up packets, so we'll kind of preview what that, uh, process is gonna look like. Then, if you can look at your calendars, what I wanted to propose, uh, Mayor and I had chatted about this a little bit, uh, over the last week or so, we've got, uh, we've got a budget that we'll, uh, be moving forward with this evening. But I know we wanted to have some of those longer-term, bigger-picture conversations about capital and just priorities. So, what I'm throwing out there, uh, to see if this might work, um, January twentieth, in lieu of doing an evening work session, um, so that everybody's maybe a little more fresh, we can have some lunch, trying to get a, maybe a four-hour window, and I'm just throwing that out there. Is that date workable?
And we're starting looking at like noon to four. We could shift that. It could be one to five. It could be two to six, but trying to avoid the, the late evening hours when we're all tired from a full day.
The noon to four would be the, the extent of, the, the extent of the, the session.
Yeah, I would start with that, with noon to four on the twentieth work.
It's hard for me. I'm coming back off of vacation.
Okay, I wondered about, I saw that it was a.
It's a Friday?
Weekend.
It's a Monday.
Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
So Monday is MLK holiday, three-day weekend. January twentieth is what we're looking at, the Tuesday.
So we thought.
If that's the only option, I can probably make it work, but I will have been off of work for like five days.
Okay, but you'll be back in town.
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay.
Unless something happens with airfare.
Right.
In airlines, in January.
I think I can do that.
Don't think we'll need legal.
It should work with my.
Conflicts? Work for you? Okay.
And, and that's in lieu of the trustee meeting.
In lieu of the night meeting, yeah. So we would just do like a noon to four, go a little over, but not long. Um, and we tackle kind of priorities for the year, looking at what we want to accomplish in our current configuration before the April election. And then what we want to have in place so that the board can keep moving forward with things, especially around capital priorities, potential revenue streams, this discussion about what should come out of the rec fund, which we'll get into a little bit tonight, but to be able to really grapple with some of those things and maybe even a little bit on what's our housing strategy, um, those, those kinds of deeper discussions. Okay, sounds like that's a go.
Uh, that's amazing. I'm gonna try one more, one more. Um, so thinking about, uh, we've got, um, Town Center Conversations queued up for this evening, but then I think, and I think those are a little more retrospective, but then wanting to get some time after we've all observed that conversation tonight about, um, where, where do we think we need to go next? February third, um, and maybe doing, um, like a five o'clock start, have some dinner, um, and have that be a kind of a single-issue focus for a February third opportunity?
And so that's the first Tuesday of the month and we don't normally have a meeting, but as Ryan and I were discussing, most of us kind of schedule around Tuesdays. Um, so we thought that might be one that we could grab.
Would that be a same deal?
Okay, we've already got two noes on that, so.
Okay.
That was for an afternoon kind of thing again, or?
Probably evening. Um, Ryan was saying maybe start around five. I mean, we could start at six. We could keep it just regular work session, but got another one to shoot out?
No, I'll regroup on that one.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a big winner already with. So, um, thank you, and.
So everybody mark your calendars for January twentieth, please, noon to four.
Noon to four, okay.
Noon to four, January twentieth.
Yeah, and we're looking, I think, at location outside of the confines of Town Hall to kind of give a little perspective.
Yeah, it'll still be a public meeting, but it'll be less formal without the microphones and the Zoom and all that, just a work session. And if somebody wants to come listen in, they can, but it'll really be our conversation.
Uh, that's it for updates for me. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? All right, awesome. Um, reports and discussions. So Town Center, we've got the full team here. Please join us. Um, I guess we organized four chairs, but maybe Patrick can help figure that out. I don't know who all needs to join at the table, but let's start with introductions and reintroductions and, um, appreciate the memo. Appreciate you both traveling here from Minnesota and, um, yeah, we look forward to the discussion.
Well, again, Andrew Michelson from Artspace Projects.
I will law with Artspace Projects. It's you get, any of you?
So it's, um, it's bittersweet because I always do enjoy coming in front of this board, uh, and, and visiting this community, uh, because of, you know, everything Carbondale represents and, and, and the true passion and, and the, the issues that we're all tackling here. But as, I'll end in the memo and, and the, the memo that Ryan supplied as well, in conversations about, you know, where we've come and what we've done, uh, we've, you know, essentially we've arrived at the conclusion that, you know, there isn't a natural path that is clear to us going forward and we're reaching the end of our, our contracted services and have essentially culminated that, the decision to not move forward with arts-based and our, our work on the Town Center, but wanted to come before, you know, the board, A, to present that memo, which we really addressed as trying to encapsulate, you know, a lot of the good work that was done, some of the, you know, laudable achievements of not just, you know, those of us at the table, but, you know, certainly Ramsey and JB, our architecture team, the broader community and, and certainly, uh, this board, but then also to, you know, highlight some of the challenges that, that we faced and that we expect, uh, the town may continue to face, or if there's another developer or another group that is gonna similarly try to address the Town Center, to at least have some sort of a permanent document that, you know, can live on to say, here's the good work that's done, here's some things that still might be faced. So, um, not a ton more to address than that, but wanted to ensure that we had this opportunity to have the conversation, uh, from arts-based perspective. You know, we've enjoyed this work here. We want to leave on amicable terms and I certainly, I've not gotten the read from anyone that there's vitriol or gonna be run out on rail, but, you know, don't want to just, you know, sign a document, walk away and, and not have the opportunity to discuss. Um, and so wherever we'd like to take that conversation, we're happy to do that, take, uh, questions. But, you know, again, I think just as, in the memo, the, the community engagement work, which was really extensive and, and the charrette, uh, really gave us a good footing and a real, as outsiders but familiar with this work, allowed us to really condense on what, what this site presented, what were the opportunities, and develop what I think some really robust and good architecture within the confines of, you know, the zoning and, and, uh, the desires of the community, density, housing height, all of those sorts of things. So some real, I think, informed and, and useful documents. So some real, I think, informed and useful documents that the town can carry forward and, and, you know, can present, you know, a reference or a starting point for whatever next steps may be. But those also encapsulate some of the, you know, the, the guardrails we had to work around. I mean, the zoning, there's a theater in the middle of the site. I think we're all well aware of that. And these are not necessarily insurmountable things, but these are just, you know, they're going to be there and they persist. So wanted to at least put some highlight to those. Obviously, parking's been a, a topic we've discussed many times in varying iterations here. And our plans address those in a code compliant way, but there might be things that the, you know, this organization wants to discuss and look at in a different way. The community has different input on. So wanted to at least put out there that, you know, yeah, there were some successes, there were some challenges, things to be done and some next steps, whatever those may be. Want to at least give that a step up. So happy to field conversations further from there. If there's questions about what we've done or, or insights or thoughts. And talking with Ryan in advance of that, we don't want to be too speculative about trying to solve those. And as I understand from your failed doodle poll just now, that, you know, that's something you're going to be going forward and wanting to address. And, and Artspace does remain available as a resource, whether it's formally or if it's informally or just, you know, picking up the phone or answering email or giving our thoughts on something. We, we don't intend by any stretch to fully turn our back, but just given the work we've done and not knowing exactly what to advance or how to advance it. And frankly, the economics are not getting any easier. We've sadly arrived at a position today where we, we don't see that path forward and are, you know, formally concluding the work that we've been doing together. So again, thank you all for the opportunity. And I don't know if Will, there's anything you'd like to add or happy to field questions or comments from, you know, the board or others in attendance.
Will, did you want to add anything?
Just maybe benefit of some big picture. We are, we do remain available to you to kind of talk strategically and big picture if that's helpful anyway. So, you know, we'll, we'll pick up the phone. We'll always pick up the phone. But it's interesting to me. I've thought about this journey and a little bit. And, you know, timing, of course, it strikes me, timing is important, you know? If we had started this effort, you know, maybe four years earlier than we did, there were significant resources, you know, available at that time that could have maybe changed the arc of our, of our outcome. But so part of this, part of this is timing. Sorry. Part of this is the timing dynamic around resources. And specific what's happened, you know, there's, there's a national discourse. It's, you know, pretty wild these days, wherever you land in all of that. But resources for affordable housing have been gutted, you know, certainly on a national level and in most cases at the state level as well. So that timing and as we look in the coming years, we don't see that changing, right? In the next three years, certainly. Maybe beyond that. So there's a timing dynamic around affordable housing. So I would just encourage you to think very, you know, pragmatically about, you know, affordable housing goals in an environment that I think will be really challenging in the years to come. That doesn't make the aspiration nor the importance of affordable housing any less, of course. But it does mean that trying to incorporate affordable housing in kind of sort of primary, primary sort of, you know, sort of real estate opportunities, you know, like a Town Center concept. I think affordable housing is going to only be affordable kind of around the fringes, you know, where you can buy very inexpensive land. You have, you can spend no money on parking, you know, it's surface parking at the most. But these realities are coming home to roost in the affordable housing world. So just please think about that. It's not to say that it's not impossible, but it is going to be very challenging in the years to come. And Artspace is adjusting to that very reality, too. Quite frankly, we're really focused on preserving the portfolio of affordable housing that we operate and making sure that we protect those families that are in those homes. And de-emphasizing a little bit our aggressiveness around trying to build new affordable housing until circumstances we hope someday start to improve. So I just wanted to kind of give you that this wasn't just about this effort, you know, not necessarily meshing. There, there were certainly challenges around state funding priorities versus local community aspirations and goals. So there was some, there was some tension there, of course, but that wasn't the only thing, right? There's a big kind of national arc that is here as well. And I just wanted to make sure you guys appreciated that perspective. If you're at all feeling bad about, you know, not being able to advance this with us, we are feeling bad about that. But there are a lot of reasons much bigger than many of us that are driving those forces. So I just wanted to share that broader perspective as well.
Thanks. That's great to have that perspective. Maybe before we dive into more detailed questions, could we just talk through, we, we just talked through some of the affordability stuff and we might want to go a little bit deeper on that. In your memo, you talked about funding limitations, affordability goals and code constraints. Could you touch on the code constraints a little bit? And like we said, we're not going to try to solve for those tonight, but as we go forward, for us to really, and we always said we were going to try to learn from this project and apply any needed changes, not just to this project. That, but that we would look at it for either the whole historic commercial core zone or other parts of town. And so we really want to learn from this. So so talk to us a little bit about the zoning that they kind of got in the way. And if you could have changed things, you know, what it might have been.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just want to, Ramsey and JB are also here. I'm not going to call them out necessarily, but if there's technical things related to that, I wanted them as a resource for this very question. But talking in broad strokes, I think we had a lot of great conversations in this very setting about what can we do and where is some malleability within the existing zoning. In particular, we looked at the Sixth Street side and doing residential, so some flexibility there. But I think particularly in the broader context as well as sort of hitting at affordable housing, you know, density and creating more drives down costs per unit. And that's really one of those major metrics we'll get. And also every dollar you're spending that's not in housing, so infrastructure, parking, circulation, all those things all get lumped in. And so the, the height restrictions and understanding this is a smaller community and, you know, it's a smaller, you know, built environment. The, the height limitations are something that, you know, frankly, again, and I'm not trying to just, you know, blow sunshine over JB and Ramsey's way. We arrived at, you know, pretty maximum development of the site within the existing zoning, but a lot of that also then got backed into with the parking compliance. And we also had some flexibility there as far as like the double stalls where we were parking to the bedrooms, but stacking them up. But a lot of parking, which was driving what our unit count and our bedroom count could be. And so a little bit of the tail wagging the dog there. But again, in the design we arrived at, that did work for the, the major development we did, sort of the L shape alongside Six and then the Southwest Promenade. I think the other really kind of significant thing that we, we've talked about a lot and will remain, I think, a struggle is if the, the promenade is really only going to be engaged at first at grade commercially and housing above. It's something that we've talked about, you know, not knowing from Artspace how we would take on that level of square footage commercially with an unidentified user, speculative. I think the housing piece above is relatively easy to design around. But with all that needing to be commercial, it artificially and immediately limits, you know, what can be done there. But also, you know, I fully understand and appreciate that as a promenade is intended, you want to activate it. So, you know, for my two cents, I think if there's flexibility or an amenability to revisiting on what that activation looks like versus being, you know, overtly commercial, I think that would open up, you know, some different opportunities. And maybe add some more density to the site overall if it could go four stories without the setback, because we looked at that study and once you step it up, but you have to step it back, we weren't really gaining any additional units and still the parking was the driver. So you know, in broad strokes, those are kind of the, the zoning things. I think otherwise, you know, the team understood well what was necessary for materiality and context and things like that. And I, I didn't really see broad code elements as, you know, overly restrictive or, or unexpected. But some of those kind of key components as far as the height and the parking and the commercial piece. And that can be worked around, but those were really kind of things we always were coming back to in whatever iterations we're going to. And, you know, I think just finally, you know, it's not really a zoning thing. But given that the site has a theater on it and circulation and things needing to be built as far as access and all that, it, that's going to be a challenge regardless and integrating that in whatever form with the built environment that goes around it. It's something that's going to be juggled with, not so much related to zoning. And again, not to put JV or Ramsey on the spot, but if they'd like to add anything to that, or well, if there's any further thought on the, on the zoning pieces in particular.
There's nothing really wrong with the zoning, right? It, it encapsulates, I think, local community's aspiration for what they want their built environment to be, right? So it is what it is in a way, and there's nothing really wrong with it. What I think we learned is that a lot of, a lot of the resources we were chasing, right, are regulated by, you know, state regulatory agreements and guidelines. And those are admittedly, you know, biased to more urban settings. So we just, there was, it just didn't really fit. And so just, there's nothing inherently wrong with, with your, you know, zoning. It just didn't necessarily fit into the, sort of the box that the, the, the state, you know, regulatory environment created for us to access those funds. So that, you know, became a challenge throughout the process.
That perspective, Ramsey?
Yeah. So just to kind of elaborate a little bit on what was said, but kind of in the same vein, really. I think one of the other constraints with us having the ability to sort of like explore ways of, you know, asking for a variance to the code or exploring those avenues had to do with, you know, timing is everything sort of thing. And so when we started this project, we joined the team, we had a very intensive summer of outreach and charrettes and, and polls that Heather helped with, which kind of guided what the polarizing topics were. And of course, parking and height were two of the main ones that are, their topics we're bringing up today. But then exploring, you know, ideas of adjusting parking and coming up with special district rules or special rules around housing that's benefiting the community. The timeframe that we were working under in order to get ready for the CHAFA application was not one that allowed any of those windows to necessarily be explored. The other, the other element of that is that tight timeframe also didn't allow us to kind of broaden our, our look at the community as a resource to solve the problem. Namely, the American Tree and Cement Lot over here, where we could have more of a larger solution with parking in town to help service this and partnerships with other, other organizations and different ways of just sort of like expanding our, our lens as we come up with ideas instead of having to say, you guys have three months to solve this, get it approved by Board of Trustees and get the application in. And we, we move fast and we really engage with the committee really well, I think, and we got a lot of consensus. But the timeframe was a major limitation in how far we could push certain topics. So and the one thing I would say is, uh, next chapter of this is, you know, since a lot of the, the criteria of CHAFA aren't necessarily compatible with, with town code necessarily, or the AMI mixes. We, we, if we do walk back into this process, we take it a little more slowly and more, a little more methodical and don't have a, a pinned deadline to an application at the forefront, because I think that was one of the things that I would have, you know, hindsight twenty twenty, of course. So that's, that's what I'll add.
Thanks. JV, would you like to add anything on the designers on it?
Okay, I'll just open it up for questions. I just want to make sure that they had an opportunity to give us that overview. But I think we can now open it up to questions on really any of the elements of what we can learn from this experience. Anybody have a question or comment?
Oh, just thank you. We've never done this before. And to Ben's point, we hope to learn a lot, and I think we have, not exactly what we wanted to learn. But we also had a lot of misgivings about going after Litech. I mean, we had all kinds of conversations about how that limits who this is for. So, I mean, I appreciate all the effort and the timeframe that everybody had to go and work within to try. I, I mean, it was our best first chance, really, right? We don't, we're not set up. We don't really have affordable housing money. So I, I think we really did great work to try and get where we are. I think we have a really nice looking project. And our code isn't broken. It just doesn't fit some of the challenges of financing and all that kind of stuff. But I think on our next step is to take what we just learned through this process and see if we can't take it that next step, rethink some of the price points for the units, how many there are. Are there things we have to do with our code? And what you guys did, I think, at least gave us, and so we, we went down that road. It didn't work. Okay. And point to plan, Plan B, we don't really have a Plan B yet, but I think we can get one. We clearly have a really useful site right across the way, has some challenges. But we also have, this is a desirable, desirable community. So how can we tap the resources of other development folks and, and see what, what our next step is. So I just wanted to thank you all for the effort. I'm sure it was as frustrating on your end as sometimes it was on ours to move this forward because all these things weren't lining up. But I appreciate the effort and all the time you guys put into this. Thank you.
Very kind. Thank you.
I'll add to that. I'm just copying everything Colin says tonight. But, I mean, I think our successes, I mean, I think the community outreach was incredible and the really public charrette process. And even just some of the conclusions that I remember you drew out of that polling, how people in Carbondale just don't like buildings. And I think that's just important. Again, it's, it's what we learned. We knew this was a constrained site. But it's good to be reminded because it's easy for folks to be like, well, this was donated four years ago. How come anything hasn't happened? And yeah, we could say, okay, we'll just do housing on the promenade and we'll, I don't know what we would do with theater. I mean, that's just some real constraints, which is also why that property probably hadn't sold ever since it'd been, you know, emptied out. So I think it's been, even though we don't have housing, we don't have a project going forward. We have a design that a lot of people are really excited about, and I think that can also help us move ideas and conversations forward because we're not like starting over from scratch necessarily. Obviously, it might need to be changed, but it helps when people can visualize what could happen there. So so I'm optimistic that we'll be able to figure out something. I think the idea of going a little bit slower if we need to. But at the same time, sometimes deadlines make things get done. And then you have an idea that you have to move forward. So I don't regret that we had, we were trying to push for a CHAFA funding and unfortunately their deadlines are once a year or whatever it was. So but we can take a little bit more time to figure out possible solutions and ways that we could change our expectations for what happens there. So mom, and also just thank you and thanks for bringing your expertise, bringing it here for us to learn from.
Appreciate that.
Anybody else? Questions or comments?
I'll just, I'll just say a quick thank you and to follow up specifically on the, the public outreach component. I, I was, I paid particular attention to that because I had paid particular attention to the comp plan that was sort of, you know, kind of on which, on whose heels this, this fell. And, and the contrasts were really, really, you know, without, without being critical of the comp plan of, there, there has been time and space for that. I just really want to e- express how I think accurate and honest and open that this, this outreach was. Because if you are ultimately going to present something that maybe doesn't align with what people want, and that sometimes happens and has to happen, then it's, it's best to, to do that knowing what, not telling them that they said something different, but, but showing them why, what, what, what maybe is collective consensus doesn't necessarily jive with another portion of that collective consensus. The need for affordable housing in this case. So again, I just, you know, want to express the fact that, you know, nothing was, nothing was set up as sort of compulsory approval. It wasn't joy, you know, would, do you like medium sized buildings? Large, medium or very large buildings. It was, you know, everything, right? And because if you have to choose, and you need to be given all options. And I appreciate that, 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 that this, the general vibe of this was, was was open and honest. And then, and then more specifically that the, that the charrette, which I could have elbowed my way with a little bit of help, Erica, I wasn't on the board at that moment. But that, that that was so, so, so well done and so tapped into sort of the creative energy of this town. And I think, I think going forward, anything that we do there, you know, should lean heavily on, on both paid and unpaid exuberance that we have in spades here. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we can find something and and it may just be, it may be that we need to be more creative and start, you know, start looking at some, some crazier thoughts. Who knows? But I, I think, I think what we have here is a great document. And like Ben said, I think something that we should, we should and can apply to other potential projects going forward. And I haven't read all one hundred and thirty six pages. But, but I, the, the few that I've, I've taken a look at are, are compellingly written and I think persuasively written if, if it gets to a point where we need to have hard conversations because some of those, those questions have already been asked.
Thank you for saying that. I, I think if we run old tape from when I sat here in front of you last, I'm sure I said that, you know, Artspace's job is to I'm sure I said that, you know, Art Space's job is to try to identify what a community's aspirations are and to try to help them realize those aspirations, right? It's not our job to come sell something that we think would be great for your community. So that is still our emphasis and our approach. And, and then we try really hard to try to make that vision, you know, become reality. And in this case, we weren't able to do that, of course. But I appreciate the, the value you put on that process, because those are important values to us.
Julie, you want to thank Christina, anything? Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Chris?
I guess one thing that jumped out to me from the, yeah, from looking, going through, back through that outreach thing was, was the, seemed like a positive attitude that, that people seem to have towards resident occupied, residential in that context of that development. So I do think that going forward, trying to, trying to like really interrogate our pro forma and figure out like, what can we, yeah, how do we finance this in a maybe more traditional manner? Or, you know, I think we have good plans, I think, and that whole section on Sixth Street, to me feels like something that we could pull back off the shelf fairly easily. But I, I guess that would be one question is how readily one would, you know, the town would be able to turn around on something like that if something changed, I guess, on the, on those ones. And then if you have any advice or experiences of, you know, yeah, maybe where it, where it's pushing a little bit more into a, into a, you know, the way that a private developer operates essentially, but, you know, trying to get, trying to use that just to make a project happen as opposed to trying to create a 30% profit or whatever.
To that point, we, we did some exploration and I, I do recall, you know, very clearly that homeownership on the site was, was a key goal identified. And one of the early decisions that we collectively made is like, let's, let's push towards rental. There's resources available, as Ramsey was describing. There was deadline approaching, we went for that. And one of the subsequent pivots we made was to look at a smaller, uh, for sale development. Uh, just a little promenade piece. And there's differing pots of money there, but we're still looking at, you know, affordable resources and also some mix. So I, I think that your, your point is a good one and one that we share, that the drawings that exist are robust and they're, they represent a lot of the community input and a lot of what is necessary to, you know, master plan that site. And those could be amended and adjusted, I think, in pretty reasonable ways physically to reflect more of what a for sale configuration might look like, finishes and sizes and things like that. And, you know, not to speak for the engineers and architects in the room, but you know, you can move some walls around, maybe do some things and footprint and aesthetics. I don't think you need to start from scratch. I absolutely don't think that scrapping those drawings would be useful to anybody. I mean, there's a lot that's there. And that's something we looked at, again, sort of outside our typical toolbox. I mean, we don't do a lot of for sale. We've done some. And, you know, the open market for sale model looks very different and is profit driven. But if you're not profit driven, well, where do the resources come to help offset that? And some of them exist at the state level and we explored some of those. And they're not, you know, terribly robust these days, but there are some, some things there. And I think there's avenues that could be explored. And I think there's, there's a great start to the fit and the architecture and the plan of the site that could be amended in a variety of ways there. Now, those of you, and I'm getting your turn, you have ever tried to make a condominium in the state of Colorado, which we have done, might, you know, think twice about it, but it can be done. And every, you know, jurisdiction municipality is different in that regard, but certainly the avenues exist. And, you know, townhomes and condos and a variety of different homeownership opportunities could certainly be explored on that site. And, and with a lot of the work that's been done is a starting point.
You know, one of the things I would think about a little bit for what it's worth is that, you know, when we, for years and years and years, we always talk about artists that have worked, you know, and it's kind of a novelty concept, the idea that, you know, the artist will in fact also work from their home as a place of business. And clearly, the idea of, you know, live work has radically expanded to so many other fields, right? So it's become, it's become, it's taken on its new, its, its own normalcy now. And how that is going to impact the, the housing market and the for profit sector will be interesting. I don't think the for profit, for profit sector is fully adapted to that new reality. I think they're starting to. But it is interesting to think about, you know, in this concept, which was that, doesn't necessarily have to be a, a creative centered concept, right? And there might be a market center with a broader variety of income potential that could change the economics of an overall deal. And, and so kind of thinking a little bit about how, you know, live work can work generally, I think is a very different kind of dynamic and something that the marketplace doesn't fully understand yet.
Can you just remind us, and maybe this is JV or Ramsey as well, but of, with that smaller portion, the, I think we call the Southwest Promenade, that we tried to do as a standalone with a ownership focus. What were the main obstacles there? Like, I think we're really clear on Lytec. We didn't get the CHAFA grant, you know, win that. But this was that other project, and I don't feel like we ever really understood what prevented that from moving forward.
That really came down to the funds that we saw weren't awarded. So there were DOH funds available for homeownership. There was another pot of money, and I'm forgetting honestly, which one we went after, another state program. I want to say it was a community reinvestment tax credit at that time. So all the allocations they made, we weren't awarded in that. And that was really, I think, the last conversation we had here was coming back and saying, that wasn't awarded. Let's talk about some next steps and what that may be. And one of those conversations was, you know, should we scrap it? Should we look at different AMIs? Should we do something? And we were going to have a brainstorm. And then we ultimately culminated in, you know, the discussion we're having this evening. So I don't think that there's anything physically wrong with that drawing. I think that model could be advanced, just the funding wasn't awarded that cycle. And we did not advance another application since then.
Okay.
I'm, yeah, I still feel like there's maybe a world out there where there's a successful application that's the Sixth Street portion, that's a pure residential, kind of in some ways where we started, I feel like. But without the added L portion, that I still feel like, I don't think it would be the end of the world to me, even if that was Lytec. But I feel like I would, in some ways, like to resolve this in some way that keeps that portion of it fairly whole or, you know, ready to, ready to be used again in the future, hopefully. I have a lot more ambivalence now about the, about the Southwest Promenade. And, yeah, I think that, I, I find, I feel like that's a mistake to try to develop that parcel first, just because I feel like it blocks a lot of view planes to the rest of the site. And is also sort of one of the nicer current spots on the site that I feel like could be potentially temporarily activated more effectively to try to make the promenade, like that we don't have to hold our breath for 20 years while we come up with the perfect plan. And maybe we can start to try to designate little segments of the property that we sort of agree are going to be green space and people can, and the theater and stuff potentially can start to get involved maybe in beautifying or work, you know, creating this sketch of what that, you know, pocket park or whatever it might look like or something. So I think there are those like lighter, quicker, cheaper ways that might be ways of trying to, trying to like, at least keep that idea of vitality on that promenade happening. And then, yeah, I, I think exploring more of, more of like a, more of a commercial, like an economic development proposal on the other side of the promenade. That's a, that has, still has, at least meets our 20% affordable housing, but like maybe is focused on what is the downtown commercial entities need and stuff like that.
We'll dive into all that at that work session in a month or so. But anything else as far as what we can learn from this process or anything else that anybody from the team? Appreciate you being here as well, Heather. And JV, you made the drive from Boulder. You might as well say something.
I do want to say something.
Good. Thank you.
I would tell you that on, I am not a developer and I'm also not from Carbondale, but I care very much about this community. And I, but I do work with a lot of developers and I do work in affordable housing. And I will say that, Chris, I would urge real caution about the project just on Sixth Street, that starting to parse out and do a piece of Town Center by itself may actually hinder completing it ever. And what we've, what I've had to do on several other projects with other people is if we want to accomplish this, instead what we do is we look at this and we look at much bigger, a much bigger picture in order to make sure that we can accomplish the piece we want. And I think that when the town, when the trustees get together and you want to think about how to make whatever the next step is on Town Center, this goes back to what Ramsey said, you may want to look at it in a much bigger context, like all of downtown. What happens throughout all of downtown and what are changes that are made on a bigger kind of community wide perspective that might make Town Center achievable? I think that we, as a team, Art Space and the design team, we were focused, and because the time was tight, as Ramsey said, on just that site. And there was no time to talk about, could parking be put someplace else? Could other things, were there other approaches for how to make a scalable project that might have supported the economics that Art Space was looking at and putting together as we went through that process? So that may be, the next step may not be drilling down into the little pieces of Town Center, but stepping back and looking at all of downtown and how Town Center fits in that and what the bigger kind of goals and objectives are for development throughout all of downtown Carbondale that might in the end create a supportable project at Town, at the Town Center site.
Great. Thanks, JV. That's great perspective. Anyone else want to share anything? Okay. All right. Brian, anything you want to add?
No, I'm, I'm coming in as the new guy and, and I do appreciate all of the work that's been done. I think that Lytec drove a lot of great work in a short amount of time. So I think we learned a lot in a short amount of time. When I say a short amount of time, coming from my prior town, I ask for patience all the time. And I think that's really hard, asking your community for patience. But when you have a gem like that, it can take a long time. We started in 2011 in Silverthorne and opened the doors on a downtown area in 2022. And so a lot of patience in achieving that vision. So that's all I would add. I think to Ramsey's point, a little bit slower and to JV's point, maybe looking a little bit bigger is, I think, great advice. And we have the luxury of, of doing that as long as we have some patience from the board and the community and staff, that it can take a little bit to get it right.
Great. And, you know, in the context of, it's been 20 years of people trying to make something happen on this property. So we're just the most recent owner and potential developer who's tried to make it happen and has realized that between the, the aspirations of that pedestrian activated promenade with no vehicles driving down it in a town that's not a tour, major tourist destination, right? Like, there's all these things sort of working against it, but we have stuck to this vision. And I think we'll probably continue to stick to that vision, but try to be more creative about what we can do. So we're just the, the next in a long line of people who've looked at this and realized the constraints. And I think we'll continue to learn from it. And, and I hope we're open to making some of those changes. If that's a fourth floor, if that's less parking, if the, if there's a breakthrough on one of those code changes and we see that that could really activate other lots downtown that have sat sort of underutilized for a long time. I'm personally wide open to those kinds of changes and don't think that they would cause any negative impacts. So we could, we could explore those. Thank you for, for traveling here as well, JV. Thanks for coming from out of town and Ramsey and Heather for, for being here as well. And thanks. Thanks for all your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I might just say, just a conclusion. Oh, we are from Minneapolis. I've never felt like or been treated like an outsider here in Carbondale. It's really been a, a pleasure working with you all, with the community, with, with folks that clearly care a lot about this community. So it's, it's been evident in everything we've done and every interaction, how, how, how important this work is and how dedicated folks are to it. So it's really, it's been a pleasure. We've been selected in the first place and appreciate the opportunity. And, and again, as Bill said, our, our phone is, is going to be answered if you need something or you would like to bounce ideas off, we would welcome that. So.
Okay.
Leave it at that.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Ryan, once everybody gets settled, do you want to kick us off on this next item? Is that? Okay. We can give everybody a minute. Hi, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. We are about to start talking about the Cavern Springs Mobile Home Park. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the Cavern Springs Mobile Home Park Funding Request. We have a staff memo. We have some items from our budget and from our housing plan as well as the requests. So Ryan, if you could tee this up for us, please.
You bet. Just a, a quick overview, was that your November 25th meeting? That the board was presented with a request for a funding commitment. And that is in the packet this evening. Just a little bit of geography for folks that are listening. The Cavern Springs Park, which has 92 lots, is located on County Road 154. It's about equidistant between Carbondale and Glenwood Springs. Representatives of Cavern Springs have organized as the Sopris Mountain Collective. And so I believe there are folks here this evening from the collective. And in a nutshell, there, there's a funding request for a $250,000 commitment to the park and an immediate funding request for $10,000 for legal and administrative work towards that purchase effort. Some of the things that I think we're familiar with from, from prior experiences, This A Rock is a name that you're all familiar with. And I think they're well aware of the challenges that are inherent with, you know, kind of they cap out at about 15 million. And so once you start going above that, you're into community fundraising. And I think that the number that the group is facing is about $11 million to try and crack that nut and maintain some affordability in the park. Other things that are a little bit different, I think, for this particular conversation, West Mountain Regional Housing was a kind of a, a collective force in the last effort. But really that kind of took up a six month, everything that the coalition had to pull that off. And they are now kind of in catch up mode, trying to do some of the work that kind of went by the wayside during that time. So they are not available at the same level as a resource. So just a data point there. There was some question at the last meeting about what are other parks in the area? And just kind of, I think, trying to think a little more globally about, this is, you know, something that can become maybe more common with some of the legislation that's in place that provides that opportunity for parks to pursue their own ownership. Crystal Valley Mobile Home Park, 41 home sites in Carbondale, currently owned by an LLC, and then Sopris Mobile Home Park, also in town or partially adjacent to, are things that you could be having that same conversation in the future potentially. And then, you know, we didn't do an exhaustive survey of all of the parks in the area, but just cited that Aspen Public Radio had noted that about 50 parks between Aspen to parachute, ranging from five to 300. So kind of just gives you a, a, a perspective of what's going on in the region. Mayor mentioned your community housing plan. Couple of things in there, obviously. A lot of competing priorities for small resources. We're talking about a goal of increasing units within the town from 144 to 288 by the year 2032. Obviously, we just had a conversation about Town Center. That's a really big opportunity, but a big lift when we're talking about funding. There is a reference in the housing plan to the conversion category. And that has under future considerations, an opportunity to explore partnerships with Garfield County when we're talking about the potential to make parks permanently affordable. So just a couple of other data points that are maybe helpful for your conversation this evening. I think everybody's well aware, you know, we did put some budget information in there. Obviously, you know, use some significant town resources to make those last two purchases of parks possible. But we do have, like I said, competing priorities with some things that we're looking to accomplish within the town as well. So. So with that, I'll turn it back to the board. Are there any questions? That's kind of a general overview.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Any clarifying questions for Ryan? Okay. I don't think we have like a formal presentation, but is there anybody here who wants to speak on behalf of the group or make an additional public comment? We took public comments at our last meeting, but if anybody would like to speak on this before we have a discussion, you're welcome to now. You can just approach the podium and tell us your name, please, and just address the issue.
Hello, I am Monica Muniz. And I wanted to update you on our latest fundraiser. Or, you know, where we're at, up to date is 11,423. And we would like to invite you to consider, I know we asked for $250,000 and with the $10,000 for the legal fees. If you would consider more. We would love to be able to get that first million to get to where we need to go to build some momentum. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Monica. Anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Well, thank you for being here to listen. Trustees, I mean, this is an open discussion. It's not really set up as an action item, but I think it's an opportunity to just talk about where we want to go with this request. So anybody can kick that discussion off?
So obviously, we don't have unlimited resources. There are multiple mobile home parks in the area. As far as I know, this is the closest to us that is on the market. Many of the residents see Carbondale as their hometown, work here, kids went to school here. They pay sales tax here. So I, I think as challenging as it is, I think it's important that we try and support their efforts. They are going to have to do a lot of work. And they have some big goals here, but I think it would be great for us to be the first ones in, as we often are. And contribute to the $250,000 now. I mean, I know it's a letter of intent, so it's all dependent on them being able to close. So it's not like, like they'd get a check right now, just like the other parks. And I'd also think we should put the $10,000 in for their legal and administrative support. There are some grants they can go after at the state level, and they're need, going to need some help to do that. So I would be fully in support of the current proposal.
Thanks, Colin. Other thoughts?
I mean, I just feel awful because it does feel like an incredibly high mountain to climb. And, and it is, the timing is terrible in the wake of these other parks, having kind of exhausted a lot of the financial wherewithal, I feel like. But I still think we, I agree with Colin that I think it's important for us to, at least, at this point, it's a good symbolic thing. And I think in the context of the discussion we just had about the Town Center, makes me less inclined to try to hold my breath around building, you know, saving too much money for building things if we can immediately help people. So yeah, I would, I'd be inclined to agree with Colin, although, I mean, it is a letter of intent. It's, if they are able to get the rest of the money, I'm, I'm willing to say we, we would go to $500,000. You know, if, but that's, you know, there's so much other money to stack on top of that, that I'm afraid they won't get there. So.
Thanks, Chris. Other thoughts?
I'm, I'm in, I'm in a similar position, I think. I know my, my concern, and I think evidenced by my question at the previous, the previous meeting regarding sort of the number of these parks, is certainly a question of a slippery slope, and I think that's, that's a concern. However, as Colin mentioned, it, this is, you know, these are largely Carbondale residents. Every bit, every bit as much as the volleyball players who are asking for sand, every bit as much as many of the pickleball players who are asking for shade. And I think if we, if we start to draw very, very, very narrow borders on, or, or, I think we have to be careful where, where we kind of sometimes draw that, draw the line for certain things and, and where, where our priorities are. And it's certainly, certainly a reasonable argument to say this is not, not something that we're willing to, to, to support. At the same time, I, I, I feel like this is really not, not, not close to that gray area and, and I'm fully supportive of it. I kind of wonder whether, to Chris's point, whether if, if we're going to say, we'd be willing to say 500 if they get the money, then do we say that now? Does that help more? And I think that's probably not, not something that's amenable to many of the, the rest of the board here. But, but I, I'll at least sort of go on the record of saying that I think we'd be hard pressed to, to not feel compelled and, and excited to, to pursue that if it looked like they were nearing a finish line. I just hope that we can, any, that, that in addition to some legal funds, you know, anything that we can do as a, as a town with, with our labor to kind of help, help the process along. I think it's, I hope we can do that. And anything that we've learned from the more recent successful ones, anything that we can apply there would be great.
Okay. Thanks, Ross. Erica?
I think similar to our last discussion, if we step out and look big picture, I mean, I've always been supportive of us, you know, if we need to provide resources of housing in the mid-valley, kind of anywhere, like affordable housing that gets built or that we preserve in Glenwood helps us. Because then if maybe teachers are living there and not having to commute as far as they might be. So I definitely have been looking at this as it's not that far from our town boundaries and feeling like we do have an opportunity to help preserve 93 housing units. And I mean, this Town Center project that we've been talking about, it was 41 is what we were aiming for. And so really similar to the last two projects, they're just as important. And then I would say we should go ahead and add this. We have it in our housing plan, but let's add it to our work session in January to just plan for when the two mobile home parks that are right in our town, or we, we consider them in our town, even if they're in county land, for what we're going to do when that happens to them. And that way, we at least have it maybe written down where we're like, okay, we are going to put resources there because it's the same, same story. So I'm very comfortable with the $260,000 that's been requested. It sounds like without having the regional housing folks able to help them, they're going to need even, you know, kind of more resources to help make the asks and find somebody who can help them fundraise. So I would be willing to entertain a larger amount as well, but in our letter of support. But 10,000 right now for their legal fees and then at least a letter of support right now for 250,000.
Erica. Pastor Christina, any thoughts on this one?
I think I'm always more in favor of preserving affordability than trying to create it. It's less expensive. We get a better ROI. We keep the people here who are, who have been invested in our community. That was one of my concerns with the Lytech housing is that we would get folks who weren't invested in our community, which, not to say that they don't add to the community, but preserving the community is, is a higher priority for me. So I think I'm on board with what they're asking for.
Okay. Christina?
I echo what everybody says. I, I feel like, you know, housing is important and it's really challenging, as we heard from the, the prior presenters. And this is something like everybody says, it's an immediate impact. So I am okay with the ask and, you know, looking forward to if it does get where it goes and maybe even looking at being, contributing more to the ask, if that's possible.
Okay. I may be the outlier here again. Last time I was the, the one that voted against the 1.1 million dollar level for that contribution. And I'm not comfortable supporting this at this level. I, I value the effort. I think it again needs to be really regional and really collaborative. I'm not hearing that other, the other local governments are stepping up on this. Maybe they'll be prompted to, as Colin suggested, if we go first. I think that's worth trying. But if it comes back that we're sort of on our own here, I guess it won't go forward at that point. But I, I wouldn't be comfortable if, if we were the only one. And so maybe that's a moot point. But I, I think what we could do is probably two separate motions. One to authorize the immediate release of $10,000 from this year's budget from the housing fund for the technical assistance, because that can be done immediately and I'll support that. And then I think another one to bring back a letter of support, letter of intent that we could formally approve at a future meeting. And I think whoever makes that motion can decide what that number is that goes in there. And it sounds like there's enough support for that to pass and.
Just a, just a quick question. Is there, is there, is there an immediacy or value to immediacy for, for that letter to go out sooner rather than later? For, for, for them?
Who can update us? I think Colin is familiar with the timeline. Ryan's familiar with the timeline.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're back here next week, so I don't know that there's anything. I would defer to Colin.
Okay.
The sooner the better, but we did one for the last, well, I wouldn't be very different, right? We changed the numbers. So we already have a model.
And I think we'd be on the record as supporting it. People start talking about that and then it would probably be on our consent agenda as just an item that, so that we can really see exactly what we're committing to, because this is a, you know, we don't have it in front of us. And so I think it'd be a motion to direct staff to bring that back.
I'd move to release the $10,000 immediately out of this year's budget.
Second.
Do we need any more detail on that in order for that to be? Okay, okay.
It's clear.
Okay, so motion by Jess, second by Chris. Any questions or discussion before we vote on that? So it's for $10,000 Housing Fund this year for immediate technical assistance. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Any other motions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we get a letter of intent for half a million dollar contribution in the event that the rest of the funding is secured towards purchase. Is that enough?
Second.
So a motion by Chris, second by Christina. Let's make sure we're totally clear on what we're voting on there. So it's $500,000 as a letter of intent. It will not be immediately released, but it would be contingent on the group securing the rest of that funding and closing on the development, which is going to be contingent on other partners coming into the table. Any questions or discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. So that motion passes six to one. Okay. Any further discussion on this item? All right. Thank you all for being here. I think you got what you came for. Thank you.
I forgot to mention that we got $52,000 donated from the Colorado Health Foundation from Denver. And we also got $10,000 from Mountain Voices Project. So we are, we do have more money in. And we also have Mountain Valley, I mean, Mountain Voices Project has started a fundraising campaign for us. So we are, you know, we're, we're getting started on that. We got a QR code. The Aspen Community Foundation is our fiscal agent. So we have, if you go to their website, people can make contributions that way as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Monica. All right. Thanks, everybody. We're going to move on to other items. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to go, whatever, whatever works for you. Next item on the agenda is the local licensing authority items. Patrick, I think, is up on this one.
And the Crystal Theater application before you tonight. Do you have applicant Kate Sherwin here to answer any questions from the board? Very excited, you know, for this application and the vision that Kate has, you know, for the theater. All documents have been submitted in a timely fashion and are prepared and ready to be sent to the state. The needs of the community were petitioned and met and received general positive feedback from the applicant. And other than that, happy to entertain questions from the board.
Great. We haven't had a new liquor license application in a little while. So Kate, welcome and maybe just tell us a little bit about the vision here and I think this will be pretty straightforward. Green is on for that one. So try again. There you go.
There we go. Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm the Executive Director of the Crystal Theater Alliance. And we are applying for a liquor license for several reasons. One of them is every single movie theater I ever talked to informing the nonprofit, their, one of their first questions is, do you have a liquor license? It's integral to most independent theaters' survival. We expect it to increase our revenues conservatively by 50,000 a year, aggressively by 120 plus. We also believe that it's not just about revenues. It's about creating a reason for people to go to the theater and creating an experience that they need. People don't have movie theaters in their pockets or on their computers. So why go to a theater when you can just watch it at home? And part of it is an overall experience, whether that's getting a beer with your friends and seeing it together and going out afterwards and talking about the movie. Or if it's having a glass of wine and maybe some charcuterie prepackaged or something like that. So overall, it's about making the theater more of an experience for everyone while helping us kind of complete our goals and our mission in a nutshell.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I think the typical things with a new liquor license are, you know, we want to make sure that underage minors aren't served and people aren't over-served, but this doesn't seem like the kind of environment where those things are likely to happen.
No, I mean, it would be kind of shocking because most times when people go to a theater that has liquor and it doesn't have a built-in bar in the lobby, you get a beer, maybe two. You know, you don't really want to go to the bathroom in the middle of the movie either. So it's, it's that kind of thing. It's, but it is enough to tip the scales in our favor in terms of revenue as well. Just even as that one beer that maybe 35% of our patrons would get.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Anything else we need to know? Okay. I think we can entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the liquor license for the Crystal Theater Alliance.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is revisions to the local licensing authority procedures, which is also Patrick. And I'll just say, I appreciate you bringing this forward, Patrick, and continuing to just kind of modernize our, our operations and figure out what needs to go in a public meeting and what can be done at the staff level. So with that, why don't you give us an overview of this?
Yeah, that, that really provides good summation to the genesis of bringing this forward. Really to provide efficiencies to board agendas, decrease on the amount of items that you have to review and prepare for to get ready for a meeting. Then also, this is going to streamline the process for the applicant as well, from weeks to months, in some cases to days. So really creating more expedition for the applicants as well.
Right. I think we've talked a lot about streamlining process and, and just having a customer service approach. So appreciate you taking that on and, and finding an opportunity. Any questions for Patrick about this? And maybe, maybe you could just give us a quick overview and for the public, what would, what would change? What comes before us now that would be handled at the staff level in the future? And what would continue to come before us? For example, the liquor license, a new liquor license, it sounds like would still be here.
The main thing, or the, the things that would still come before you would be new license applications. Also, special events that utilize town right-of-way and asset would still come before you. And then doesn't happen too often, but requests for show cause would come before you as well. I'd bring that request and then the, the board would designate a hearing officer to hear the matter. So those would predominantly be the three types of items that would still come. So those would predominantly be the three types of items that would still come before the board. Everything else as far as transfers of ownership. Renewals, modifications of premise, again, that don't utilize any type of town right of way. Would all just be handled at the administrative level.
And these are mostly things that have been on our consent agenda. So we just wouldn't see them. They're not things we've been discussing a lot. You know, we had one when the Black Nugget renewed its license a couple of years ago. We had some dispute and that was that process that, you know, we were ready to follow that process if somebody wanted to go through it, the dispute process. Because we don't, we're not equipped to gather evidence and take testimony for and against when you're taking somebody's property rights away. Which is essentially what it is. So we have to be careful about those. Any questions for Patrick?
No, I I feel good that he has discretion to bring things to us if he needs, you know, once more second opinion on them, but yeah.
Just just like my two senses that like the first times that I, or the first time I think I've ever had any any contact whatsoever with town. Was, and I think probably is true for a lot of folks in terms of organizations, it's maybe is applying for a liquor license. And I think, and they were both like exceptionally good experiences. You know, where where someone went out of their way to like make sure it happened because I was late, you know, or something. And and I think anything that we can do to streamline that and make it a happier, you know, first impression is just wonderful. So great.
Great. Do we need to open this to public comment? I don't think so. Okay, I don't anticipate that that's what anybody's here for, so. I think we'll, we're ready to entertain a motion if somebody's ready to make one.
I'd move to approve. I have series twenty twenty five amending the Tarverdale Municipal Code to allow the town clerk to administratively process certain super license applications. And to reinstate certain enforcement procedures for liquor licenses.
My second. It's mine.
Motion by Jess, second by Colin. Any questions before we vote? All in favor say aye. Aye. Alright, motion passes unanimously. Great, thank you, Patrick. Now you've got a legacy here. What resolution or ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty four? Okay, next item is a little bit more information on some of the park and rec projects that we. Moved to remove from the budget recently. We've had a lot of email comments and and discussions and things about those. So either Ryan or Eric, whoever wants to kick that off and give us a little context, appreciate you coming back with some more information.
I was gonna give Eric walkup music, but he got here so fast. Yeah, just a quick summary for the public. I think it was on the October twenty first. Eric was here presenting the rec department's budget, so that was kind of the first exposure to a couple of those items. November eighteenth was when those were removed from the budget and then on the twenty fifth, the full board requested this conversation this evening. So we provided some background of the memo. Eric's here. There you go.
Thank you. We do have some support here too, some, you know, avid volleyball players. Also Laird Little, who really was the organizer of our summer youth volleyball. You know, clinics that he ran in Miners Park for the first time. And he also ran the the first ever first annual, hopefully we can have a second annual, third annual, fourth annual, fifth annual. A youth volleyball tournament in Miners Park this summer. And so he was the one who really brought up the. The condition of the of the sand there and and how, you know, really wasn't matching what what it needed to be for. For the programming possibilities that were that existed there. So he he uh, he's a geologist by by trade. And so he, if you want to know anything about sand, he's, I mean, I didn't include his ten minute. You know, PowerPoint that he brought into my office, you know, for the meeting. But but if you want to see it, it's pretty fascinating if you if you want to learn a lot about sand. But he did tons of research on it and did find a great solution to to our needs. At at the at those courts. And so we did put some money in last year's budget to start to improve those courts. We did get some additional lines. We did get some padding around around the nets themselves that were needed to have a tournament. We did get some, and we haven't, don't have them installed yet, but we did use some budget money to get some. Different, I forget what they're called, but they're, you can raise and lower the nets under tension. And they're really, really nice for tournaments that uh, that you need to raise and lower the nets for different, different male and female heights and stuff. So so we we did put some uh, some effort into that facility this year. Saw the results of a very successful youth tournament. And and his successful clinics that he offered out there. And then I think you guys saw the, there's some passion in the community for volleyball. And I think it's one of those sports that, you know, anybody can. Get a ball and just go out there and play at any time. And so I really do like when when our parks offer that free amenity. Always there. We gotta take care of it though. And so that's where I come from. So that's uh, that's the the sand piece of that. And and if you wanna, I think you all did receive a bunch of emails, you know, from from that community. And about how passionate they are about the sport and how they'd love to see it grow here. Some of that use of that field and that park could go elsewhere. Just if we, we don't think about how to take care of our our existing amenities.
Pause there for a second, see if there's any questions specifically about the sand. And I think, you know, we. We made a decision without all the information, so now we've gotten more information. And it, our option tonight is to do nothing and these items aren't in the budget as currently written. Or at the end of this, somebody could make a motion to rescind the previous motion in whole. Or we could split these two projects if if that's where we end up. I would just say I appreciate the the input that everybody's given. It takes time out of, you know, people's lives to get involved in the process, figure out our emails, craft a. An email. They've all been very respectful and they've they've really helped us with our understanding. It's, I'm not a beach volleyball player. I've never thought about the fact that little. Different sizes of grains of sand can cause cuts and scrapes and abrasions and all that kind of stuff. So it was, it was interesting to to read all that and even to for me to read that people are going to other communities. To to play the sport rather than playing here. So that sense of community building. So I just appreciate everybody's input on that. Any any questions for Eric or other thoughts maybe just on what you've heard, any information that's. Added to the thinking on that one before we talk about pickleball?
I I like, I think I mentioned before, I had a good, great conversation with Tristan. Talking about a lot of those things. To to be clear, right now, the only communities that that have it in the valley. The the only communities in the valley, sorry, that have the good sand are are Aspen. And then, tell me if I'm wrong, Tristan, but but just Aspen, the Newcastle is a private, is a private spot though. That's not a, not a municipal. Supported thing. And then Silverthorn Vale area, correct? Beyond beyond that. So so it's not, it's not like, so I'm I'm in favor. Cut to the chase. I'm, I will, I will support putting this, putting this back into the budget. However, I just think we want, need to be aware that like this is great, like all the more reason for us to be aware that this is a a service that we're providing. That not, that not every community in our valley or and very few frankly are. So I think that's that's important and we should be, we should take pride in that. And I and I'm, I have every. Every bit of confidence that the volleyball community knows what they have or will know what they have. And they've already taken great care of what what we've already sort of provided there. And hopefully that grows. I actually, I think going forward could be convinced that if we're doing this on those two courts, that maybe you just go ahead and do it. At Sopers Park. Because it would seem like there was, there'd be some logic to having three courts that are this, that. If if you're gonna have a court there, that you just have three that are are maintained in the same fashion, are equally available. And that if you want to do a tournament or something, I know, you know, Aspen does sort of a combined, as twenty years ago at least, a sort of. Combined sand and grass kind of thing. And there we certainly have much more space to do that sort of thing. So so on this particular element, again, a super appreciative of of the the. The reach out from from the volleyball community, very eloquent, very well reasoned. And very passionate, but also respectful. And and I think that's a, that's a wonderful thing.
Any other word comments on this one before we hear about pickleball? Chris?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I should probably apologize to to Eric for creating a workload for you. I'm sorry about that. But I really appreciate this memo. I think this is a great memo and I think it it is good going forward just to get. Get a little bit, dig again into sort of the history of where the Recreation Sales and Use Tax Fund splits off. And sort of just trying to further our understanding of where our budget is in terms of like, yeah, we've always funded recreation stuff out of the general fund. But it hasn't always been totally transparent. What is that number over time? Is it, has it changed a lot? Is it, it kind of, the sales that fund has been such a boon to the town and creating the, both the pool and the rec center. But it all has has clouded to some degree, I think, some of our understanding of our budget sometimes. And so I think hopefully that's a valuable use of it, but I do apologize to people for dragging a bunch of people out to, you know. For their, you know, for the thirty thousand dollar thing, which is is very minor in the in the context of our budget. So, yeah, I will also, I would make a motion now, but I I don't know if we want to wait to do those after the other discussion or I can make a push on this.
Let's be where we end up on the whole thing and and also take comment. If anybody wants to comment specifically on the volleyball courts. And then we'll move on to the pickleball. But anything else you wanted to add on that, Eric, on volleyball?
No, I just, I think, you know, it's a very passionate community. Volleyball and and, you know, and yeah, if anybody does want to speak, then. There, you're welcome to.
Yeah, so now's your, now's your time. If you want to speak to us, just approach the podium about three minutes. Please introduce yourself, address your comments to me and and we'd love to hear them.
Okay, hi, I'm Alex Klausman and I've been living in Carbondale for about a year now. I've played beach volleyball for two seasons and I'm really looking forward to my third. Beach volleyball has been great because it really connects me to a lot of players throughout the whole valley. And that carries me into school and club season where I'm seeing these faces that I know and it's just an amazing community. It's also nice being able to play beach, obviously, because it's outdoors and going into summer. It's always just so much fun to be out and having fun. I really enjoy playing in Newcastle because the courts are amazing. However, the commute, I'll be getting out of school. And the traffic takes really long sometimes, so it'll end up in me being late. And a lot of people further up valley don't have the same opportunity to participate because they're not willing to make that commute. So I think just getting these courts in better condition and ready to play would really help a lot of people be able to experience what I'm able to experience.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Geologist that Eric would add now, or good now, earlier. I do have sand samples if anyone wants to come see. And basically all sand is not created equal and you'll see why. So there's two problems with the Miners Park sand. It's the coarse grains and the and the fine grains. The fine grains created dust, which is horrible when you kick it up. And that's what is the hardest to get rid of with that volume of sand. You can't wash that out. So hopefully it can reuse that sand somewhere where they can really, you know, it's gonna be put to good use. And then we'll get this good quality sand that I just wanted to address the the maintenance issue. Or that came up in that first meeting is, do we have to do this every year, every five years? Once we put this sand in, it won't get dust in there. This comes from Mother Nature. And once we put that in there, all you gotta do is rake it and cut the grass and that sand will last a hundred years. So I appreciate your your thought and your time and all the effort that you guys put in. Thank you.
Board on the volleyball sand. Okay, let's go ahead and talk about pickleballs, what I would recommend, and then we look at this kind of holistically. And if we need to break it up, we can.
Yeah, so the next request in the budget was to really look at a permanent shade structure. And some some permanent seating out there at the pickleball courts. Those are are probably one of our heaviest used amenities in our entire town as far as the recreational amenity. And what's been happening out there, they've been attaching shade sails to the the fencing, not engineered. Not, you know, necessarily for that purpose, putting up pop ups and really not, you know, doing it in in my mind, in a safe manner. And I'm really kind of surprised we haven't been dinged by Sursa, you know, for some of that technique out there that's been used. So this would be an engineered stamp, you know, in the ground, ground mounted, cantilevered shade structure. Over over two bleachers on that west side of of the courts. Where there's really no, no big trees or anything. So we'd be creating shade out there. And and it's a, and it's it's just needed out there. I think it's just, I think part of our process is to. Is to look at how we do create shade these days with the, it's getting warmer and warmer. So we need to start thinking about providing shade in in all of our parks. So this would be a good way to do this in this park and it has a that dual function of, you know. You know, providing a safe shade structure. So. You know, this is a really a request, you know, by the Roaring Pork Pickleball Association, but also the public out there. You know, they have twenty four hours of of use, exclusive use of the six courts there. But then the rest of the time it's open to the public. So just want to make sure that's understood in our MOU language with them. That that it's, you know, a very little bit of time that they have according, you know, in comparison to the time it's open to the public. So so it's really for, also for the public. So I just want to make sure that's understood too. Anything else you'd want to know about it? I'm happy to answer any questions.
Eric, totally agree with the need for shade in our parks. Will the bleachers underneath the shade structure be movable?
They they probably not, will not be. The with the four level bleachers that they're requesting to have enough, you know, seating there to satisfy the demand. They would need the kind of protective fencing around them. So once you get above that three level bleacher. And you get to that level, you need to put protective fencing around. So they get very heavy.
I just wanted to clarify. So the the bleachers really are just for people watching pickleball?
Yeah, and and participating and waiting.
Okay, but like the larger part, public at other times really won't be able to use it much more because.
It would be specific to the pickleball. Courts and then the use of all those courts, yeah.
It's a four level one or a two?
Uh, yeah, four level.
And Eric, on the placement, so the original plan in the MOU was around, you know, expanding three more courts into this same zone. Is that right? Like, will this preclude? I know that we got into the whole thing with the water line, but I felt like that was something that might be worked out one day. Like, once these bleachers go in, sounds like it's pretty permanent. Is there like a new concrete slab, bleachers, fencing, shade? Are we gonna have room for more courts then in the future? Or is this kind of like, this is finishing it out?
Yeah, because this is, you're thinking about that south side. We were gonna expand to the south side of the courts and we were gonna put shade.
Here, and I'm seeing that like this is where we're gonna put the the new courts. That's west, so I was assuming you meant here.
On the. The street parallel to the street.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't.
And they're not spring trees along there that are growing? But they're, or they're. Twenty five years.
Yeah, they're gonna take a while.
And what is the, that other thing is kind of dead in the water because of the water line? And what is the use of that park space behind the, you know, between the, between the baseball field and the pickleball courts?
We've, we've kept that an open space. And the the use of that has been when our fields are not ready for, like in the springtime when they're still too saturated. You know, and not ready for for soccer, mainly soccer to to play on. We send them there because it's not, it's not big enough for a a field itself. But it's it's fine for a practice field, for sort of that preseason soccer practice when our fields just aren't ready. We don't want them on our game fields. So it's a kind of a, just a practice field that we've used it for. And then also baseball uses that that section to warm up teams when they have a tournament. All the teams will warm up in that section.
Yeah, because it did strike me as, I don't know that I think that's the most sacred cow. That, you know, if there was a situation where maybe they're building, if that building in that site means they don't have to interfere with the water line. I feel like I would be okay with trying to rethink maybe how the parking lot works so that we still preserve some level of playing over there. But I feel like also on that, that part of the project, we, some flexibility, I don't know if that would help them move forward there too. Because they also would be doing just two more courts instead of three, I think, in that instance.
That'd be a separate issue, right, for a future budget? I mean, we had talked also originally about expanding the pickleball courts toward the parking. And then leaving that other potentially for footsaw, which serves sometimes a different. um, toward the parking and then leaving that other potentially for footsaw, which serves sometimes a different demographic in the community. Um, and then there wasn't a a way to move forward with that.
Well, we have footsaw now in another.
Yes, we're gonna have footsaw in another location soon. Um, yeah, but stay in focus on the shade. I assume you guys have done like shade studies and stuff, Eric, that this would actually really shade that. I mean, it's I guess I was thinking it would be somewhere on the south side since the sun's in the south, but I assume that the engineer will figure all that out and.
Yeah, yeah, we we haven't got to that level yet um, of study, but yeah, we would definitely figure out the size of, you know, shade structure that would be most appropriate for for those bleachers. So.
Yeah.
Be open back essentially or?
Yeah, yeah, like a cantilevered over the top of the bleachers. Yeah.
Okay. Other questions for Eric and then we'll see if there's any public comment on this.
Just just qu- just questions at this point, is that?
I mean, we'll have a discussion if you want to hear your thoughts now. I think we're just clarifying, making sure we know exactly what the plan is.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, anybody from the public want to speak about the pickleball shade and bleachers? Anybody online that wanted to speak about that? If you're online and you wanted to speak about the pickleball shade, please raise your zoom hand. See a few familiar names there, probably just listening in. Okay. Um, well, let's discuss uh, thoughts on the pickleball and then um, open to a motion. Um, again, with no action, neither of these is in our budget.
I I um, I guess I still have, I still have some concerns over this this project and I'm I'm happy to sort of separate them completely from the volleyball. Um, which I think compelling case was made. I feel like we're we're serving a a com- a a larger community that I feel very comfortable. Um, maybe doesn't have quite the same contingency, although although was able to to really harness harness um, a lot of support on short notice. And not that that's necessarily the the guiding principle here, but I I think I I'm starting to actually the funny, I think the more we dig into this, the more I have actually just some concerns about making maybe looking at this a little bit more holistically with that whole space. Um, and the multiple users and the and the multiple recipients um, uh, of of let me start with 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 use of the space. Um, you know, and and, you know, it's basically building something for someone for for largely or largely for a community that that has a a certain, you know, guaranteed use of that space. And that that feels a little strange to me. Um, and also the sort of a dedicated shade structure for one specific purpose that doesn't also allow someone to barbecue underneath it. Um, or something like that seems a little um, for for a park area that does lack straight black shade. Um, I I I I do prefer to see some things that are serve multiple purposes. Um, and yeah, I think finally I just, I just, I I think there it this it begs a larger question that I think we're going to get to in other meetings, sort of about where where the bounds are um, for rec funds. You know, we have a lot of a lot of programming possibilities, you know, and and we don't, you know, we we haven't put we haven't invested a ton of ton of space in hockey, for instance, necessarily. You know, there's lots of things we can do to do more for that. Um, there's there, I think there's also areas where we could do more um, to to really look at what we have and and uh, increase the use of what we have. I don't think there's a lack of use of of the pickleball courts. Um, and to the to the safety end of things, you know, we don't provide tie downs or dedicated shade for our soccer soccer fields and baseball fields. Maybe we do for baseball fields. Um, but I think there's there are just our limits there and and at this point I'm not, I'd rather I'd rather consider this later. Um, and that's where that's where I am.
Okay, anybody else? Yep, Eric.
Um, I mean, I was supportive of having this in the budget in the first place. Um, and I think we should. I think all the emails that we've been getting, both from the volleyball community and um, all the work that we have heard from folks who play pickleball. Um, it's just a reminder that our parks bring the community together. And I don't think this is an outlandish request. Um, as you guys have heard from my updates on the Park and Rec Commission, we are doing a master plan in twenty twenty seven. And pickleball wasn't even around. They're not in the first master plan. So there hasn't been any sort of resources kind of put towards them other than gifting them the land to build these courts. So I think just acknowledging that, you know, things change, we can certainly do a full evaluation of that park during the master plan process and that should be brought up. Um, when we want to, you know, create that RFP. Because I do think there's a huge, you know, a a lot to talk about, like Chris was raising on just the layout and how how we want to see that part grow. But I don't think we should put this project that takes up some space between the courts and the road. Um, and that they've been asking for. It's been brought up multiple times to the Parks and Rec Commission. It does benefit more than just the pickleball club. Um, when it's not club time, it's also very busy over there. So uh, like Eric said, it's one of our most used parks. Um, and then I just think, uh, I guess in the master plan process is also our opportunity to identify um, any other projects that are going on, you know, in our parks. Um, and it sounds like the volleyball community, the beach volleyball community is going to be part of that process because they also, you know, have kind of come forward and started using our assets more than when our first master plan was written. Um, and so I think it's going to be a really exciting community outreach process. And I think that's when we can look at these bigger picture, but I would be very supportive of um, putting this back in this budget. I don't see any reason to not um, include it in next year's budget.
Any other thoughts, Jess?
Um, I just would like to point out that both of these things were talked about in the October twenty first meeting. So we there there was background information in those packets when Parks and Rec came to us. And there was information about the sand and there was information about pickleball. Um, and nobody brought up any concerns at that point. This whole conversation feels punitive to me. I think that we we are a Parks and Rec town. We are an arts town. These are, these are assets to the community that bring people here, that keep people here. Um, pickleball tournaments, volleyball tournaments, the like, we talk all the time about economic development. That that is so, that's such a broad umbrella. Um, you know, I'm not a member of the pickleball association, but I I, you know, when I can find a free court, I want to go out there and hit if I can, like, I'm not good at it and it's a fun thing for me to go do with my mom and my my kids and it's multi generational and it's um, doesn't have to be a a tournament. Um, and and so so there's nothing else that's ever going to go on that other side of the courts. It's it's a very small patch of grass and if it adds to the value of those courts and it's eighty thousand dollars, like, it just seems so crazy to me to take a balanced budget, a conservatively balanced budget and be like, actually, at the last minute, we're not going to fund this project that's been in the works for months. Um, and and then not put the money anywhere else. So I I really feel strongly that this is this is it feels punitive and that we should not be pulling things out like this and not reallocating the money somewhere else.
Thanks, Jess. Any other thoughts?
I'll I'll just retort that I don't remember have any recollection of us actually discussing either of those issues. They were in a huge packet. Certainly, but I do think having a little bit of further discussion has not been without some value. But I am totally in agreement that I'm willing to put both of them back in the budget. So.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, for me, let's just come, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I feel like, um, you know, everything's important and I think wearing this hat, you look at everything in the community and, you know, we're all here to to hear other people's thoughts and I'm actually glad this went back because it was, I think it's great that people are coming in and talking about the safety of the sand. You know, pickleball shade, I think that is important. It all is economical development, but, you know, also, we are working with not such a big budget either. So and I think, you know, for us newer trustees, it is good to understand, like, you know, and I know we're gonna, we talked about that, we're gonna learn more about about that in our work session because again, I was coming at it where this was in our capital funds and it just felt like why didn't it stay with Park and Rec? But again, we kind of, we kind of talked about that because and I've talked, I have talked to a constituent about it. When I was thinking about capital funds, I was thinking a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I mean, we do have segments of our community are important. We have a soccer segment. We have a Latino segment. We have, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of other sports. Housing is really important. And when I put my hat on and I sit here, I always look at what is the big picture of everybody? So I mean, I think it's a great thing that we've had this discussion and it opens my eyes and then I learn other things about, hey, well, you know, I I could see, I really think for me and I think as constituents, this really should be under just Parks and Rec. Um, but I get it. We're all one. And so I I think it's great that we had this discussion to talk more about it. Um, and it's great because now I feel like if somebody comes to me in the community about more things about soccer, more things about bathrooms, it's like, well, speak up, go to Parks and Rec or come to this, come come to these these meetings. Um, I don't think it's a waste of time that people come and participate in our town meetings more and explain more. It's so awesome that we have a geologist. I want your name. I also hate the same. We're looking for a geologist. But um, anyhow, I I just think it's important to see the young people come and voice how important the volleyball is. I think it's all worth it. Um, so anyways, thank you, everybody, for your time. And like I said, I'm okay with with um, the motion and rescinding it. Um, yeah, so anyhow, there's my piece.
Thanks, Christina. Yeah, all I I would add before somebody might make a motion, um, is just it it has been a good learning experience for all of us. And I think part of what we're learning is how much um, work and public process happens before something gets to us. So for us to say like, is this a priority or that's priority? Like, this all happened and all this discussion was had at the Park and Rec level and at the staff level to elevate these projects um, above all the other things we might think of at these meetings. So we can we can have this level of discussion at this um, this level where we're really getting down into the details. Um, but you know, bike pit trails will come to us with a recommendation on some crossing and, you know, we could say, well, we want to discuss all the crossings. Um, but we also can take those recommendations, ask some questions and um, decide if we're moving forward. And that's kind of where we are, but I think it's been a good, good learning process.
Ben, can I just respond to like a few, like, just some of the things? Because I think sometimes what happens here is we kind of, we sort of go around the horn and so it takes a ti- and in in lack of, or and don't get a chance to sort of respond specifically. I just, I just want to be real clear that 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 I don't think any of this like is an outlandish or ever was or is an outlandish request. And I think very I don't know that we've ever gotten any outlandish requests from any of our boards. They do very, very, very good work. Um, I thi- nor nor do I think the intent here is punitive. I can see, I can see that appearance. I certainly can. Um, I think that the where I struggled with this um, was was seeing sort of s- seeing it outside of the rec, the rec budget, um, but then also trying to understand what that, well, if it's only this much money and it it's it's not going to break the budget and why wouldn't we go ahead and spend it? Then, well, why wouldn't we go ahead and spend eighty thousand more anyway? And if and if and if that's the case, then are we, then are we doing a disservice by not encouraging our our other advocacy uh, committees, basically, to to put 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 forth more more on their on their on their on their dockets? You know, I mean, I can see the the uh, Arts Commission asking for fifty thousand. I mean, there's fifty thousand bucks that they could do in a hurry that would would really elevate art. Um, the tree board could spend fifty thousand bucks or eighty thousand dollars in a hurry if they were kind of given the green light or and more more encouraged to do so. And 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 I've had some really interesting conversations with a lot of folks. And this is not punitive at all. I think it's part of the larger picture of where we decide to spend our money. And I think I think we if, you know, to to the extent that our budget is balanced, but we also have a reserve, the degree to which we step towards that reserve or not, you know, I I feel like the rec department does a really good job of just of going after it and that's admirable, absolutely. And I've I've, I mean, I I have nothing but respect for that. Like, more projects are better. I think at some point, it's our job as a as trustees to say, um, th- these are the bounds. And and maybe part of that's just process, maybe part of that is, you know, when when and where we do those things and deciding at what level we want to get involved or not. But I think it's important that we do reserve that right. Um, because ultimately there there has to be some priorities among the priorities, recognizing that that there are many good priorities. Um, and and that we can, we can choose, you know, at some point, there have to be some decisions that are made. Um, and so I think going forward, I I I would encourage, as as some of us have said, that that the community get involved. Um, if if there are projects that you see, whether they're recreation, whether they're arts based, um, whether they're housing based, for which we don't have a committee currently, um, that that you you press, press a little bit more beforehand. Um, and I think that that's that that can only serve a better function. It might may may give us more to decide upon. Um, but I'm I'd be happy to kind of have more projects out there that we need to decide from and 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 maybe there's some sort of uh, logistical and systemic ways that we can do that. I look forward to that discussion. Not now, but at our at our trustee's or our work session.
Okay, thanks, Ross. Would anybody like to make a motion? There's a, there's a potential motion in the bottom of Ryan's report on page three, which would be to if if we're so inclined to rescind the November eighth meeting motion for these two projects being removed from the budget. That could be a motion now. There could be other motions or no action means we don't fund either of these.
Could, can I make a motion to either separate the two or just or a motion for the the sand? Motion, okay. Well, I'd like to move move that we reinstate the uh, the budget item, the rec department's budget item for the volleyball sand into the twenty twenty six budget, please.
Okay, so.
Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Collins. This would be just to reinstate the sand, then somebody else could make a motion to reinstate the pickleball courts if you want to. Okay, any questions before we vote? This is just to reinstate the thirty thousand dollars for the sand for the volleyball courts. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Are there any further motions?
I'll make a motion to rescind the November, November eighth motion. Do you want me to sep- separate it?
I think now, since we've separated it, yeah, let's just get rid of the rescind thing and just add the.
Reinstate. I'll make a motion to reinstate the eighty thousand dollars back into the budget for the pickleball court shade structures and bleachers.
Second.
Motion by Jess, second by Colin. Any questions before we vote?
Session before we vote.
Sure.
I just wanted to emphasize Ross's point that I don't think this was punitive. Um, this has been an amazing budget process, thanks to Ola and Ryan, but it's also been very expedited and we've had to go through things very quickly and I think one of the things, and I'm really glad we're having the session on the twenty first?
Twenty.
Twentieth, twentieth. Um, because I think we really, one of my frustrations is how do we fully understand what we're trying to accomplish in the bigger picture? And when I saw and I, these things were in the memo, but then in the budget, they were in the general fund capital expenditures. So that raised, and so I just raised the question. These are very important things, very supportive of the rec program. Eric does a great job. And uh, we're the beneficiaries of all that. But um, we really need to have a larger discussion about our budget. So I'm really glad we're having that and it's happening soon. And it I think it'll really set us up well for the coming year and the coming budget session. Um, so I'm supportive of putting these things back in. Um, I think it has raised a lot of questions that I think we're going to be able to at least get some answers on the twentieth? On the twentieth. Great. So thanks. Thanks for everybody's input. Thanks for all the comments from the audience and um, I really enjoy this board. Uh, I I, we agree on a lot of things and sometimes we don't, but we work through it and I really appreciate it. So, thank you all.
So there's a motion on the table from Jess to reinstate the eighty thousand dollars for the pickleball uh, bleachers and shade and a second by Colin. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Uh, nay. Or yes, or whatever.
Ross votes no, everybody else votes yes, so motion carries six to one. Okay, so both those items are back in the budget. Let's take a five minute break and then we'll um, get into that final budget.
Hey, guys.
Thank you.
Spend money, get applause. Neither than I.
It was, it was actually pretty, it was well done. It went on a little long, but it was like, wow, we got a lot of, you've got a lot of, wow.
Long before you got there, but I was here.
As well, I'm like, what the heck, what is this? How did I get through that?
Ryan answered me about these and I said, they're kind of hard to spin sometimes. I find myself at the front of a long line and I'm like, if I get this out.
Did you ever?
We're all here except for Patrick.
This is the big moment.
I think we're ready to go.
All right. Uh, thanks Mayor and Board. Um, I had a note, I think we started on October fourth, so two months ago to Colin's point.
Yeah, good point.
Um, and I don't know that, um, especially at some of the early points that Ola would have said, this is amazing. Um, it was, it was uh a challenge. I think I talked about that on uh October fourth and I'll just mention it again briefly. New Finance Director, new Town Manager, new software, uh, learning the budget and everything as we're, we're building it. And we asked for patience and you were really gracious in each of the sessions that we had. So, thank you. Uh, we had department presentations, we had three sessions here, lots of conversations about the budget. Uh, when we get to final, it's usually fairly anticlimactic and that's usually how it's supposed to be. So um, here we are. Big picture, uh, Carbondale's in the enviable position of being able to budget conservatively and still be in a position to bring new amenities and great improvement. So I think I've not been here in years past, but that's the same story for twenty-six. Uh, we've been very conservative, but can do some great things for the community. We do have, uh, I think the economy is still a big unknown. Um, and so we are heading into the new year uh in a good position. October sales tax uh puts us at four percent, four point six percent over actuals year-to-date from twenty twenty-four, so still great trajectory. We'll see um what uh twenty-six brings. We've um, I've talked about the budget's dynamic and we've made some adjustments since draft number two. Ola will go over those this evening. As far as process, we've got um four things before you. It'd be great, I think, if we could take those individually when we get to motions on the ordinance and the reso that are specific to the budget. So ordinance seven and reso twelve. Um, if you would be kind enough to add uh some language similar to with the addition of the pickleball and volleyball budget items, just so that we have that on, on the record. I know we had the prior motion, but just to uh, bring that into that resolution and ordinance, that would be great. Uh, we do have property tax ordinance and appropriations ordinance to finish up twenty twenty-five before you as well. Um, just want to thank uh staff. It was um a lot of uh challenge with that new software and just all of the transitions. Um, a big lift for everybody. So thanks to staff. But particular thanks to Ola. We did throw him in the deep end. He did a great job. Um, lots of evenings, lots of weekend hours, just trying to get his head around everything that is this budget while also trying to learn everything else that the Finance Director has to do here. And learning uh lots of new things like what's home rule and just getting exposed to this municipal environment. He's done a great job. Uh, also thanks to Kevin Shoresman. Uh, a lot of historical knowledge here that's been incredibly valuable. Uh, that goes far beyond just his Department of Public Works. He also um always made time uh to sit down with Ola or myself or both of us and kind of give some history on what, what is this? Where does it live? Where can we find it? Uh, in budget conversation. So um, big shout out to Kevin. Then the last thing I'll end with, um, I'm, I'm uh ecstatic. I've never heard a professional give us a hundred-year commitment on a purchase, but we have, that sand will be here for a hundred years. And so that's probably the best deal we're going to find out of anything we do in the budget. I imagine we might have to supplement a little bit, but um, that's great. So anyway, kidding aside, um, I'll turn it over to Ola and he can walk through some of the changes that we've had since budget version two and then happy to answer any questions.
Right, thank you.
Great, thanks Ryan. I, I wanted to echo Ryan's statements. Just wanted to thank you all. You've been very gracious and patient. Uh, as the two debates have gotten up to speed, as you know, um, sorry, there we go.
It's just sitting out, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't uh been in municipal finance, so this was a lot, a, a big learning curve. And uh, I really want to think, say thank you to all of you for uh your patience and understanding and for Ryan's help and um want to echo his statement about Kevin. He's been just wonderful there every time we need him and has a lot of knowledge to share. And the rest of the staff, they put a lot of time and energy into their individual budgets and um really accepted open gov and really got in there and, and got, got their hands dirty and got, got it figured out. So um, I think we're off and running and, and we have a, we have a great budget. It is conservative. We are spending down fund balance by quite a bit. Um, but there's, there's a lot of uh really good things in there and um I think we're really setting ourselves up well for, for twenty twenty-six. So for the sake of, I know you've all had a chance to review the memo, but uh for the sake of anyone watching online this late, hopefully we save the, the boringness for last, so everybody would go to bed and kind of ignore this part. But uh we'll kind of just go, go through the memo just as a little bit of an overview for anybody who needs it. And then we'll just open it up for questions and those resolutions. So um, as you know, this is a review of the final municipal proposed budget for twenty twenty-six for the town of Carbondale, Carbondale, Colorado. And it's the result of many months, a couple of months for Ryan and I, um, of the town, town staff, public hearings, public comment and direction from the board. And uh this budget is to be adopted to this evening on December ninth, twenty twenty-five in conformity with local government law in Colorado and complies with generally accepted accounting principles and all relevant statutes. Uh, the town of Carbondale's twenty twenty-six budget includes operational transfers, appropriates thirty-eight point six seven million dollars.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four point six seven million dollars, thank you. Um, to the funds as listed in the memo, won't go through those, but it's split fairly evenly between uh operations and management of thirty-eight percent of thirteen point two million, capital projects, ten point nine million, and personnel services at thirty percent of ten point four million. The operational budget includes revenues of twenty-six point five million and expenditures of twenty twenty, twenty point, twenty-three point seven million. And thus the twenty twenty-six operation budget has revenues in excess of expenditures of two point eight million and therefore balanced. Uh, we do have capital expenditures of ten point nine million. You do have the detail there in the memo of all the capital expenditures by fund and includes investments in facilities, equipment, technology, infrastructure across multiple funds. Um, and as I mentioned, a use of the fund balance of seven point seven million uh of the, all the funds combined. The recreational u- use tax fund uh has the most uh expenditures appropriated to it of four point three million. That's about forty percent. Capital construction has two point six million, twenty-four percent. Water is three point, is one point five million at fourteen percent. The general fund is one million at nine percent. Wastewater is nine hundred and twenty thousand, eight percent. And the streetscape fund is five hundred thousand, five percent of the capital construction funds. Uh, as we've discussed, the revenue projections are relatively conservative uh for twenty twenty-six and are based on twenty twenty-five sales taxes, which is the largest percentage of the budget. And that is through uh the actual results through September plus October, November and December uh from twenty twenty-four. Uh, and the sales tax collections for twenty twenty-six are set at zero percent increase over the twenty twenty-five projected year-end. And the ranges across the valley range all the way from three, three and a half percent up in Aspen um and Picken County down to negative one percent, zero percent in Glenwood Springs and Eagle County. A couple other uh important items of note for revenue is the highway user tax increase of twenty-six point six percent or fifty thousand. And that's per the Department of Revenue forecasting. Uh, mineral leasing decrease of seventeen point five percent, twenty-six thousand per Department of Revenue forecast and mineral severance, severance decrease of ninety-five percent or fifty-one thousand. Uh, the use tax building and permits are also budgeted down a hundred and fifty thousand, just there's no expected large development projects next year. Um, like there was this year with A and B, the A and B Bank project and Chester's and then the new hotel on Main Street. Um, in terms of revenue distribution, sales tax makes up the largest portion of the budget. It's thirty-seven percent at nine point seven million for the twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, charges and fees is six point four million or twenty-four percent. Other taxes is nine percent and two point five million. And then the rest makes up the, through the remainder. Um, changes from twenty twenty-five projected year-end from draft two include a reduction in total expenditure, expenditures of two hundred and forty-nine thousand. There are no changes to revenue for the twenty twenty-five projected year-end. The expenditures include additions of shop with a cop, which wasn't budgeted. So eight thousand there. I think that's next, this coming weekend. Um, sidewalk construction, forty thousand dollars from the Eighth Street uh sidewalk construction there. That was where the final bill came in. Uh, the chamber of commerce fifty, fifty thousand dollar reduction. This is just matching expenditures with uh projected year-end revenues. And then EV purchases, this is the large one from draft two. The police department EV purchases, those, those vehicles didn't come in in twenty twenty-five, so that, all that, those funds were pushed into twenty twenty-six. And that is two hundred and forty-seven thousand. And that was in the capital construction fund. For twenty twenty-six budgeted revenue adjustments from draft two, uh, we, we have an increase in budgeted revenue of a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars from draft two. And that includes uh eighty-two thousand dollars for the, from the streets, streetscape fund. And uh that's just the uh latest twenty twenty-six for- forecast from the Garfield County Assessor. We have uh fifty-nine thousand dollars uh in the lodging tax fund. And that is again another um from the Garfield County Assessor. And let's see here. Oh, uh, yeah, and then twenty thousand dollars decrease. Um, sorry, I said, first one was. Yeah, yeah. The general fund, the streetscape fund, and then the lodging tax fund is a decrease of twenty thousand. So now all that is a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase in revenue. The twenty twenty-six budget expenditures from draft two, a reduction in expenditures of three hundred and one thousand. Um, we had an increase in the EV purchases, so that's just pushing those EV purchases into the twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, increase of the shop with the cop. We have the, we removed the uh miners volleyball. Uh, sorry, the recreation equipment. There was twelve thousand dollars in there. Uh, there's, there was also budgeted ninety thousand dollars for new equipment. So that was just a double counting and it was kind of an open gov uh issue that we caught. We removed the thirty thousand dollars for the miners volleyball court sand, um, which we'll put back in. The lodging tax and recreation, we, we reduced by thirty-five thousand dollars. That's also just matching revenues with the budgeted expenditures. And the pickleball courts, we removed that eighty thousand dollars. And uh we, the four hundred thousand dollars for the highway one thirty-three head crossing. There was a, a, a line item for four hundred thousand dollars and a line item for five hundred thousand dollars. Those were doubled up. They were the same thing. They were called different names. So um thank you Colin for pointing that out last meeting. So we were able to pull that out. Um, and in terms of communications, uh, the state requires adoption of the budget and certification in mill levy no later than December fifteenth and submission to the state of Colorado by the January thirty-first. Notice of the budget hearing for the December ninth, twenty twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting will be published in the Sober Sun. And for, and the proposed budget will be posted on the town website and copies will be available to Town Hall for public inspection. The online open gov budget book is projected to go online, hopefully in, in sometime in Q one of twenty twenty-six. Uh, additional action items will be, as Ryan mentioned, ordinance number seven is appropriation to funds and spending agencies. Uh, resolution number thirteen, levying property taxes to the general fund and streetscape fund. And ordinance number eight appropriating uh additional funds to defray uh expenses in excess of budgeted amounts for the housing and trash fund. That's it.
Thank you. Very thorough. Questions?
Yep. In the memo, it says resul- resolution thirteen, but then it says motion to approve resolution twelve?
It's like we have both.
Okay, so there's two?
Yeah, there's, twelve is at the bottom of the memo.
Okay.
On page five and then thirteen, I think is a separate.
Yeah, I think we included, we included twelve in, in with the budget approval and then we separated out seven, thirteen and eight into, into separate um items, I believe.
Great. And I think Brian, did you say whenever we get to motions that we should add to resolution twelve, the addition of the um volleyball and pickleball money? Is that right?
Correct, and ordinance seven, if you could. Those are kind of the, both the budget uh items.
Other questions or comments before we get into motions? I think we've all said thank you both very much. And this has been a, a major effort. And I do appreciate Colin, kind of your pointing out that, yeah, we moved really fast. So we raised some things that might normally have been raised earlier in the process and we raised them late, but here we are. That's okay. I would just say with the open gov stuff, I'm still optimistic that that was a good move. Um, it was a weird move right as our former Finance Director was leaving and it was mid-budget year and all that, but um, he made a strong case that we needed to do that. And so I appreciate that you all have uh embraced that. And I would just say, I'm glad to hear that we'll launch that platform by the end of quarter one. And I'd love to have some discussion and kind of presentation about that at one of these meetings. Because even for the kinds of questions that we've been having about, well, what do we do in recreation that comes out of the general fund? By looking at, we looked at like Picken County and I think some other places have that platform and it's pretty dynamic. You can kind of say, I want to see these things and the charts and graphs, you know, reconfigure and, and show you the data you want. So I'm still optimistic that that'll be a good tool and appreciate you working through it.
Yeah, and uh the, the staff did a great job, you know, really embracing it and putting all their information in. And, and the budget is done in open gov. That's all the budgeting has been done there. Um, it's really just, as you mentioned, the dynamic reporting and all those sort of tools need a lot of time and attention and work put in then into them before they're really public ready. So it's really that phase of the project that before we really posted on the website. So we're going to have a a budget book that will be more similar to the one we have currently, just, you know, posted on the website until we get that up and running. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Or, or printed books if you want to come in and get one of those.
I carry mine around.
We, we, I, I use it every single day, so. Greg actually came in today and um, um, had a nice little meeting with him. He's our, he's one of our, our reps for uh one of our um, where we have some of our money saved. And uh he talked a little bit about the budget book and that the challenge is there. And I was like,
Anybody else want to do one?
Go for it. You're on a roll.
I would move to approve resolution number 13, levying property taxes to general fund and streetscape fund.
And I just want to make sure that that's correct, it says for the year 2025 at the top of that, is that okay?
Oh, I was looking at the memo.
It is not. Thank you for catching that. So maybe just, it's a series of 2025, which is accurate, but then I think in the title, it just says.
Property taxes for the year 2025, yeah.
Wait, is that? Yeah. It's, all the rest of it's right, it's just that very first.
I think the series portion is correct, I think the property taxes for the year in that third line.
Yeah.
Down, incorrect.
So maybe just with that amendment to both.
I would amend my motion to clarify that it's property taxes for the year 2026.
Okay, and.
Okay.
Jess, you still see?
Yes.
Okay, so motion by Erica, second by Jess. Any questions about resolution 13? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And I would move to approve ordinance number eight, series of 2025, and ordinance appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amount budgeted for the housing fund and the trash fund. I'll second.
By Erica, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Want to keep going? Anybody else want to do one?
Go for it. You're on a roll.
I would move to approve resolution number 13, levying property taxes to general fund and streetscape fund.
And I just want to make sure that that's correct, it says for the year 2025 at the top of that, is that okay?
Oh, I was looking at the memo.
It is not. Thank you for catching that. So maybe just, it's a series of 2025, which is accurate, but then I think in the title,